Good afternoon, good morning, and of course, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome back to the 2022 World Emerging Security Forum. And now, welcome also to the CIPRI Special Session of the 2022 WESF under the theme of "Environment of Peace: Security in a New Era of Risk." So now, we would like to begin the session with a short film, and I would like to pass the microphone over to Dr. Achela Beisinger, Asia Regional Director and Head of Programs at the GGGI, who will be our moderator. So now, ladies and gentlemen, let's get our attention to the screen.
Insecurity and conflict are on the rise. Human activity is putting the natural environment under more stress than ever before. It is an increasingly toxic mix. The number of armed conflicts around the world has doubled in just 10 years. So has the number of people displaced from their homes. Spending on arms is increasing, global hunger is growing. At the same time, environmental crises are adding new risks to security. Drought leads to failed crops, floods force people from their homes, ocean ecosystems die. The twin security and environmental crises are creating new, complex risks and compromising our prospects of achieving and maintaining peace. The result: a new era of risk. Unless we take action, the situation will only get worse. There is a way forward. It is possible to build the foundations of a new security, and it begins by acknowledging that we need to tackle the twin crises together. We must address the root causes of the environmental crisis: cutting carbon emissions quickly, reducing pollution, restoring forests, protecting nature. However, solutions meant to address environmental issues can have unintended negative impacts on peace and security. We must enable a green transition that is both just and peaceful, with policies that avoid sparking new opposition or conflicts. Governments need to switch spending from things that fuel the twin crises, such as building their armed forces and fossil fuel subsidies, to activities that restore the environment and build peace. Environmental integrity and peace are inextricably linked. By addressing them together, we ensure that measures aimed at solving one problem don't make the other worse. Ideally, they would create positive synergies. The Environment of Peace Report explores options for building peace in this new era of risk based on principles of urgency, fairness, and far-sightedness. It makes recommendations that everyone can use, from the United Nations to governments, from financial institutions to civil society. The need is urgent, and time is running out. Find out how we can build an environment of peace.
Excellencies, ladies and gentlemen, thank you so much for joining this session today. This is the Special Session on Environment of Peace: Securing a Just and Peaceful Transition in a New Era of Risk. I'm Achela Beisinger. I'm proud to represent the Global Green Growth Institute here as the Director of Asia. And just to say a few words about GGGI, we operate with the vision of a low-carbon, resilient world of strong, inclusive, and sustainable growth. So the topic today is very much relevant to our organization as well. And I must also mention that our President and the Chair, Mr. Ban Ki-moon, the former Secretary-General of the UN, is a great promoter of security, peace, as well as the environmental protection. As an introduction, I want to mention two of my previous experiences. Before joining GGGI as the Director of Asia, I was the country representative of GGGI in Papua New Guinea. And as you know, this country is one of the most biologically diverse countries in the world, but also losing its diverse forests to human activities. And it is a country that is fragile and has extreme low capacity for resilience. Unless urgent action is taken regarding protecting the forest cover in Papua New Guinea, the country will lead to more conflicts as well as communities will be affected further. And before joining GGGI, I was also the chief legal and strategic advisor to the Least-Developed Countries Group in the Paris Agreement negotiations, and I played a key role there in negotiating the Paris Agreement. Paris Agreement is one of the multilateral treaties that identifies the need for urgent climate action and just transition for a better world. However, what is apparent is that within the climate change community, as well as general environmental agreements lexicon, conflict and fragility simply do not exist when the reality is that many of those on the forefront of the climate and environment emergency also struggle with fragility and conflicts. Now, I want to come to this very timely report. I read the report with great interest. Thank you so much, Dan. It gives a sobering message, which is indicators of insecurity are rising while indicators of environmental integrity are sinking. The mix is toxic, profound, and damaging. And institutions with the power to find solutions, including governments, are waking up, but far too slowly. What I would also like to emphasize is the report's series of recommendations for action, and its set of five principles to guide those actions. And it also gives hope that all recommendations can, given the will, be implemented within a few years' time. So with that introduction, let me now turn to my very distinguished panel. Thank you so much, Dr. Dan Smith, for your leadership in this report and also this session as well. Dan is Director of the Stockholm International Peace Research Institute, CIPRI. And then I have Ambassador Kim Hae-yun, Ambassador and Deputy Minister for Climate Change, Ministry of Foreign Affairs, Republic of Korea. I'm also very proud that Ambassador Kim was the former Deputy Director-General of GGGI and also my former boss. I am privileged to share the stage with you. Now, let me turn to you, Dan, first. More than 30 researchers from CIPRI and other institutions contributed to the Environment of Peace Report. And those researchers were guided by a panel of international experts on environment and security, and led by Margot Warstrom, the former Swedish Foreign Minister and European Commissioner for the Environment. What a great team to work on this report. I want to know, what is the problem that the report addresses, and what are its main findings, please?
Thank you so much, Achela. And I want to thank also the Ministry of Foreign Affairs of the Republic of Korea for agreeing to have this special session sort of added to the World Forum that we're all attending. And thank you all in the audience and online so much for your interest as well. As you said, there was this quite big team. There were 30 of us on the research side, and I was also a member of the international panel, which was about 12 people strong. And then we also, I think it's important to say, we had a youth advisory board as well that we recruited from really all around the world of about another 20 or so people. So all in all, there were 60 of us from different geographies. We were never able to meet in person because of the pandemic, and we were fighting the time zone differences in order to be able to meet virtually. So you asked, what are the main findings? The first thing is, as it's said in the film and as you were saying, we have these twin crises: the crisis of environmental deterioration. There's been a lot of discussion over the last few years, which we've very much been part of, about the relationship between climate change and insecurity. And there's an increasing amount of evidence about that. But we took a slightly broader frame. We looked at the environmental crisis more largely. Climate change is a crucial part of it, but so is the loss of biodiversity. We're into the sixth mass extinction and losing species at a rate that has never been identified before in history or prehistory. We're losing biomass. We're losing, in some areas, the number of insects, of pollinating insects in an area is down by 75 or 80%. And that also has effects on food, because so much of our grown crops depend on pollination. There's the air pollution crisis that we know quite a lot about. Outdoor air pollution kills over 4.5 million people each year. There's other pollutions as well: chemical pollution, soil pollution, the plastics pollution, and so on. And all of these aspects of the environmental crisis reveal a deficiency in international governance. Now, at the same time, like previous researchers, but perhaps more systematically and on a larger scale, we've uncovered the evidence of the way in which climate change and other aspects of environmental crisis feed violent conflicts. And to summarize that without going into detail, but there's numerous cases in different regions. To summarize it, there are so many cases of instability and conflict now, where what is happening to nature is not the whole story. There are always other factors involved, especially bad governance, inequality, and general impoverishment. But if you leave nature out of the story, you're not telling the whole story. It is so often a part of it. And I think that it reflects the fact that we are much more dependent upon the biosphere and upon the natural environment for our well-being, even when we're living in these highly urbanized environments, much more dependent than we often recognize. So we have these twin crises, but they are interlinked. And to summarize that, environment and peace are so closely linked that if you damage one, you damage the other. Now, the good news that comes out of that is that they're so closely interlinked that there are ways, and there is experience, but at relatively local and small scales. If you enhance one, you enhance the other. So the linkage works both ways, for both ways, for bad and for good. I think a further point which I want to emphasize, to pull out amongst the six general recommendations that we make, is that we clearly see from the environmental crisis, we have to, we have to start on the big green transition. It's not just an energy transition, but that's a big part of it. But we have to start on that. Now, when we are thinking about economic and therefore also social change, transformation on such a huge scale, it's not going to go smoothly. You know, we're humans. We don't do things smoothly. There's going to be problems. There's certainly going to be losers as well as winners. There will be those who lose out economically. There will be people who lose their jobs and their livelihoods or see them threatened because of the green transition. So we have to look after that, or else the transition will go wrong. So we have to insist on the idea that it needs to be done fairly and peacefully. It's a just and peaceful transition. And the way to achieve that will be by being as inclusive as we possibly can of different social groups, of indigenous people, of the poor as well as the rich, of the private sector as well as the public sector. So I'll stop there. That's the overview of the report, if you like. And let's go on, because obviously you have questions for Jenny.
Thank you, Dan, for highlighting the key messages of the report, particularly the twin crisis and the solutions that need to be kept just, inclusive, and fair. Ambassador Kim, your current position and much of your assignments in the past have focused on climate change and the environment. You have also spent some of your career concerned with security issues across the world, including as a Korean ambassador in West Africa. What are your reflections on the themes that Dan noted, and how do you expect these issues to play out in Korea and elsewhere?
Thank you very much, Achela. And thank you very much, Dan, for your very useful explanation about the report. First of all, I must say that I cannot agree more on the points raised by Dan about the strong linkage between environment and peace. When I started the climate change negotiation 15 years ago, there was a widespread view that climate change is an environmental issue. That's why from most countries, environment ministers, they came to the negotiation, and then they discussed about how to effectively address climate change. However, more and more views emerged that climate change is much more comprehensive and covering all sectors of the life. And finally, there is a strong view right now, I think, that climate change is a security issue, yes? Because it gives direct impact to the human security. It gives direct impact to the people's daily life. Just think about natural disasters we are experiencing right now. For example, in Korea, this spring, Korean people, we experienced the worst wildfires during the very dry season. So it gave a wake-up call to Korean people that Korea climate is changing. And also, last year, Korea experienced the longest and hottest summer, and many, particularly older people, they died sometimes, and also they had very difficult time to survive. So climate change is providing direct impact to the human being's survival right now. And also, we all know that climate change gives very strong influence to agriculture, so-called food production, and also water, natural resources as well. So many countries, vulnerable countries, particularly least developed countries and small island developing countries, they are severely hit by the consequences of climate change. And climate change is very closely linked to the poverty. And we all know that poverty also has very strong linkage with conflicts, yes? Therefore, I can say I completely agree with what just Dan mentioned. Climate and other environmental crisis has a very strong linkage with the security, human beings' security, and also conflicts as well. In that sense, I think actually this session is very relevant and very timely as well. So we must, I mean, the global community must address these dual crises with strong partnership and coordination. And Achela, because you just mentioned about my experience in West Africa. Yes, I spent two years in Senegal as Korean ambassador, and also I covered five other neighboring countries in West Africa. So Western African countries, they contributed to the climate change very, very little. So they didn't experience so-called industrialization like European or North American countries. And their major industries are agriculture, fisheries, and livestock raising, yes? But they are severely hit by the climate change and environmental degradation. Therefore, people are, every year, people are concerned about negative impacts of climate change. Their incomes are decreasing, and their poverty is getting more serious and serious. That's why most countries in that subregion, the governments are very much struggling with the dual crisis, so-called climate, environment, and security. Particularly one of my covering country, Mali. The country is huge, but most territory of that country is being occupied by terrorist group. Because simply the community people, because they are very poor, the young people, they are very easily tempted with the military, the terrorist group. So the young, because they don't have appropriate jobs, they are just joining the military, the groups. So my conclusion is, as Dan just mentioned, environmental degradation and climate change are very closely linked to the security. And also, it requires urgent and coordinated, coherent response from the global community. Let me just stop here, and then we will go for the questions.
Thank you, Ambassador. Thank you for very clear explanation as to how the climate change issue is linked. It started as an environmental issue, but now it has become a very serious security issue. And thank you also for referring not only to the Republic of Korea, but also to countries like least developed countries and small island developing states who are actually at the forefront of climate impacts, even though their contribution to the problem is very limited. And I also like how you linked it to the need for green transformation, transition that Dan was referring to, and the need for it to be just and fair. So, Dan, I'm coming to you now. The twin crisis of insecurity and environmental decline interacted in complex and often unpredictable ways. And this is creating what the report is calling a new era of risks to lives, livelihoods, and natural world. Risks that in extreme cases can overwhelm societies and even entire countries. How firm and clear is the evidence of these new forms of risks, and how do you present them in the report?
So, thank you. It's a very important question to be understanding. It's a very important question to be understanding the nature of the evidence, the basis of the evidence, because I think this is a field of study which has got a little bit confused when it has tried to look at this in a quantitative way, looking at the statistics, looking back over the past 30 or 40, or sometimes even 50 years, on a group of 150 or 160 states, and not seeing very much impact of environmental deterioration or climate change on conflict, and therefore saying essentially, well, you know, this is a non-problem. But the thing is that if you're looking back at the past, well, you're looking at the past. If the future is going to be different because of environmental deterioration, conclusions based on how things have been over the past 40 or 50 years are not going to catch what the problem is. And secondly, if you're looking at a very large number of countries, and taken abroad, you don't see a high number of the problem cases where the linkages are clear, do you then say nothing about those cases where the linkages are clear? So we don't get into the statistical argument of how many countries are being affected by this or how often. What we're looking at is the individual cases. And there's a number of case studies in this report, which, by the way, between us, amongst the group of 60 or so, we rather casually refer to this as the short report. This is 80 pages long, and it's got a certain number of cases in, but there's a, the longer scientific report with, you know, a thousand footnotes is coming out in October or November of this year, and be about 360 pages long. And there'll be an even bigger quarry of evidence for people to dig into there. So let me give you a few examples. Somalia, consistent climate, consistent increase in mean temperatures over the last 50 or 60 years, resulting in a pattern of weather which is essentially kind of a flood one year and a drought the next. Against a background of civil war and the collapse of the state in the early 1990s, still a fragile government trying to project its authority, get its authority across the country, supported by a very, a large, very effective UN mission. When the floods come, who is the first, who is the quickest to respond with aid? It's very often the jihadis, it's very often al-Shabaab. With that, they increase their standing, their reputation, they increase their recruitment opportunities. The following year comes a drought. What happens with the drought? Well, in one way or another, people's livelihoods are being threatened. For example, they have to sell their livestock at a loss, and their income runs out, they have to leave their areas where they have been living for, you know, their families for generations, and they migrate to the towns and to the margins of the towns, to what are often called informal settlements, but slums would be a better word, where the possibilities for the young people, especially young men, to find jobs and dignified employment, as you were saying from the case of West Africa, they don't exist. So what do they do? Well, very often, al-Shabaab is turning up and talking in very persuasive ways and offering them a possibility, and off they go with it. And this, this kind of pathway from environmental deterioration via the impact on livelihood to armed conflict is a quite common one and seen in many places. In the dry corridor in Central America, you remember the lot of, kind of, you know, I mean, almost panic about this caravan of immigrants walking northwards towards the Mexican border. They are driven there by the combination of the poor environmental conditions impacted by climate change and by, essentially by gang warfare and, again, poor governance. And I'll give you one more example, and it comes from Egypt. And again, I could go on with many, many examples, right? But just one more from Egypt, because I think it really has something to say about, as you said, the complexity of these things. In 2011, in February, as the Arab Spring is starting, crowds turn up in Tahrir Square. Some of them are carrying placards which say "For Bread and Dignity." Why the bread? Why does that get mentioned? Well, because their bread prices have all just gone up, because world food prices have increased. And the Egyptian government, like many North African governments, imports huge amounts of wheat, indeed from Ukraine and Russia. So there's going to be, the problem is going to come again during the course of this year for a different reason. But in 2011, or late 2010 and 2011, the food price went up so sharply that they were unable to subsidize it to the same degree as they had done before. And they kind of had to pass on the price increase to the people, and then the people rebelled. And then out of that, we got the instability and the changeover, and Egypt with its, the most repressive phase of its independent life, coming in 2012, 2013, and the jihadist civil war in the Sinai region. Now, why, why were bread prices going up? It was an unusually wet and cold growing season in China. It was wildfires in Ukraine and Russia on an extraordinarily large scale. And in the USA, it was the changeover in a lot of farmland from growing food crops to growing biofuels. So you've got the impact of climate change in one country in one way, towards wet and cold. In another, two countries, towards hot and dry and wildfires. And in a fourth country, you have a well-intentioned environmental policy going wrong, which is why we talk about the just and peaceful transition. I don't think anybody foresaw this particular combination of things leading to instability in such a huge and important country as Egypt. But that's the kind of way in which these factors interplay, interact with each other, and they need to be understood in each case in their local reality and in their international context, and not seen as being a broad problem, as if climate change is the same everywhere or its impacts are the same everywhere and conflicts are the same everywhere. You see some similarities, but you see many differences, and you must always respect the specific context.
Thank you so much, Dan. Thank you for listing some of the cases, or mentioning some of the cases. And I think, I hope, the long report that you mentioned, not only the short one, will not only be a good reading, but also lead to some good solutions on the ground. If I mention my own country experience, I'm from Sri Lanka, and I think you all know that the energy crisis that was the beginning of the situation we are in the country now actually have led the country to be literally bankrupt. And now, the government is seriously exploring options for renewable energy and other green solutions to build the country back. So there are so many cases, I think, that can tell the world how the environmental crisis can lead to conflicts, and the solution is actually in that green transition. Thank you, Dan, again. Ambassador Kim, how much are you and other policymakers focused on tackling climate change, thinking about these linked crises and the new risks emerging from the interactions between environmental decline and insecurity?
Thank you, Dan and Achala. Thank you very much for sharing very specific cases we are experiencing right now. Korea is also considering climate change and environmental issue as national security and an overall economic issue. That's why Korean government, about a year ago, we established so-called Carbon Neutrality and Green Growth Commission directly from the president. And also, we codified our greenhouse gas emission reduction target, which is 40% reduction by 2030, based on the year of 2018. We codified that target as a law in our legislation about green growth and carbon neutrality. So as I mentioned in my previous intervention, because climate change, environmental degradation is, they are not simply an environmental issue, because they are more comprehensive security and economic issue. So when we are going to address that issue, all relevant sectors of the government and the society must work together. That's why I believe responding to the twin crisis we are facing right now must be from the whole of the society approach. So all relevant ministries of the government must work together under the very strong leadership from the top level. Therefore, strong political leadership from the top level is very important in order to give a clear signal to all government ministries and to the private sector as well. And also, the civic societies must play a very important role in raising awareness about these challenges. In addition to that, I really want to emphasize the role of young people, youth, because the young generation, they are the generation who will live with the consequences of climate change and new crisis we are discussing at this forum. Therefore, their voice must be listened, and they must be an integral part of all policymaking and decision makings. That's why, actually, last year in Glasgow Climate Conference, Korea, we suggested to organize Youth Climate Forum every year in the occasion of COP meeting. That's why in the final document, which is called the Glasgow Climate Pact, we all, I mean, the UNFCC member countries, we all agreed to invite host country of the COP to organize Youth Forum every year. So they, the young generation, they must be a main, like, a player in the discussion about climate change and environment responses. Having said that, I also want to say that not only the government, but also the private sector, particularly companies, they must make a transition as well. As you know, Korea is very manufacturing-oriented, so-called industrialized country, and Korea's main exports are very energy-intensive products, such as automobiles, semiconductors, and chemicals as well. But the global, the trend is clearly changing, and the private sector are responding very rapidly to the change, particularly taking into consideration of the new generation, young people's demand and their voices. Therefore, just if I just to conclude my intervention in this question, whole of the society approach, that's really important. And also, when we are working together with developing countries, particularly LDCs and small island developing countries, we must focus on local community as well, because they are the ones who will play the real role in the ground. Let me stop here.
Thank you, Ambassador Kim. I followed you very closely in Glasgow. Thank you for your role improving that Glasgow Pact. And also, I'm looking forward to ASEAN Korea Youth Conference that's going to happen in August. You mentioned about the whole society approach, the importance of the whole society approach. That goes beyond the whole government approach. And Dan, in the report, it says the recommendations and the principles can be taken up by the whole world, the UN organizations, the governments, the financial institutions, civil society. So I want to come to that point by asking, actually by saying that I'm a great believer of the approach of addressing linked crises with joint solutions. And that's the first recommendation of the report. And I want to ask how much experience is there with solutions that build both peace and environmental integrity and are they working in practice? So maybe you can link to Ambassador's point around whole society, whole world approach as well. Thank you.
Yes, there's a considerable amount of experience now in what many people call environmental peace building, which is where the effort is made, but usually at a local level, in communities, bringing together a fragmented community around a shared problem, seen as being essentially a way of building more peaceful relations, building trust. But I think now increasingly understood as also, you know, potentially achieving the equally important target at the same time of restoring the services that the community is getting from the biosphere. I mean, we depend upon ecological services. We completely, life depends upon them. As I said, even in this very urban environment, but especially in local communities, in villages and so on, in some of these conflict on environments that we're talking about. And sometimes it's not to do with crops, it's to do with water, it's to do with lakes, can be to do with fishing at sea. It's whatever is the sort of the local natural resource base that a community is drawing on. Some of the, another, just by the way, a very good example, there are some, quite a number of cases where it's been possible to cooperate on the routes that the herders will take with their animals, so as not to put too much pressure on often dwindling water resources in a given area. So if you can cooperate between the herders and the farmers over access to water in a reasonably fair way, then there's a lot of evidence that that immediately starts to reduce the tensions between the two groups. And we have seen many places, in the Horn of Africa and in West Africa especially, where those tensions explode into violent conflict. I think the kind of, one of the important things to draw out of this, first of all, not every one of those projects or activities is successful, but some of them are. In every one which is successful, there seems to be, there's an important local participation. If you haven't got the local buy-in, it's not going to work. The local buy-in doesn't guarantee success, right? But it's a necessary condition for the program working. It's not a sufficient condition, it's a necessary condition. There must be other support as well. There must be a supportive, a facilitatory attitude from the provincial authorities, from the national authorities. There needs to be some funding, not usually very much, these are not usually very expensive projects. The police or the local militias need not to get in the way. So there are many other conditions, but the local buy-in is an important part of it. The second thing which I want to draw out is the second area of our general recommendations is that cooperation is the key. And in a lot of ways, I would say that our, what we find in the report is that this cooperation is a red thread that goes from the very local level, perhaps even individuals and families, but certainly, you know, like municipal authorities and village leaderships, up through the provincial level, to the national level, to subregion and regional level, and to global. There's none of these issues that can be resolved by even the largest and most powerful state acting alone. Climate change, environmental deterioration, linked issues like xenotic pandemics, the pandemics that come from animals, these are all environmentally based questions that cross national boundaries and also don't really respect chronology. You know, they sort of, they have effects across a long period of time. So you need cooperation. And I think that the big problem, the big challenge for us, and it's another area of linkage between insecurity and environmental deterioration. The big challenge is here we have a growing, an unprecedentedly high, wide, and deep need for cooperation. At a time when the international appetite for cooperation has been visibly declining, the geopolitical atmosphere has been getting more and more toxic, and now we have Ukraine, right? So all of these things that we were talking about, the darkening security horizon, the security crisis alongside of the environmental crisis, we were talking about these, we were researching this project that's taken us at least two years to research, that's well before Ukraine, that intellectually we started out on this path. And what has happened this year from February the 24th on has just made everything worse. So we have to think really hard and work really hard at how to achieve and maximize cooperation within this less conducive, less healthy within this less conducive, less helpful global context. And I think that that means that we need to begin to take, in a sense, more imaginative and diverse approaches to cooperation. So, it's not just about achieving a climate change agreement or the biodiversity agreement or the new pandemic treaty, which has been, which is being proposed and discussed in Geneva at the moment. It's also about what cooperation is achieved between businesses and cities, between village communities and international organizations, and so on. A very diverse approach to encompassing very diverse communities within cooperation.
Thank you, Dan. Ambassador Kim, one of the key lines that Dan used in his intervention was that cooperation is key. And the report also highlights that international cooperation is essential for addressing this twin crisis. I wanted to ask you, in today's political climate, do you think it's realistic to call for increased international cooperation?
Yes. I completely agree with the points raised by Dan that cooperation at every level is the key, yes. So, we must strengthen the cooperation at every level and based on the whole of the society approach. So, that's why I think at the UNFSC negotiation, 100 billion US dollars assistance to the developing world, from the developed world, this target is very, very important. So, the developed countries must achieve this target to build a trust between developing and developed countries. And also, last year in Glasgow, we agreed to double the adaptation support from developed countries to developing countries by 2024, from the level of 2019. So, those kind of multilateral agreements must be achieved with full sincerity, based on the trust between developed and developing countries. And in addition to that, one good example we achieved last year at COP26 is South Africa's case of JETP, yes, Just Energy Transition Partnership. So, South Africa, they are going to present their energy transition plan for the next five years. And the United States, UK, some European countries, they agreed to provide up to 8.5 million, 8.5 billion US dollars, if I'm not mistaken. So, this kind of bilateral or so-called plurilateral arrangement can be really helpful to strengthen developing countries' transition. Having said that, I would like to emphasize the, I'd like to emphasize the need to share the best practices, lessons learned, and success stories. So, developing countries, particularly LDCs and small island developing countries, they really need a model, a good examples they are going to benchmark. Therefore, it's important to share the best practices, lessons learned, and success stories so that those cases can provide insights to the LDCs and small island developing countries to understand where they are going to invest further, where they are going to make priorities. I mean, having said that, I am pleased to mention that Korea is willing to host 2030 World Expo in Busan, one of the Korean port city, and that's actually the Korea's number two city of this country. And just yesterday, in Paris, Korea's Prime Minister, he made a presentation about Korea's willingness to host World Expo 2030. If I just explain briefly about the city of Busan, which is located in the south coast of Korea. That city was a symbol of environmental degradation and military confrontation, because during Korean War, Busan was a provisional, like, temporary capital almost for three years of South Korea. So, that city experienced military, armed conflicts, environmental degradation, poverty, disease, many other sufferings. However, now, the Busan is a symbol of so-called cake culture, hosting Busan Film Festival every year, inviting more than 300 films from all of the world. And so, it's a cultural city and also it's a gateway of global logistics. So, if you are going to visit Busan, you cannot even imagine, just 70 years ago, this city was such a horrible, small place of this country. Therefore, I believe that actually, Busan is quite fit in the linkage of environment and security. And Busan City has a plan to make World Expo 2030 as a chance to give hope and insights to the world about real transformation for a better future. Therefore, I would like to ask audience in this room and also the audience joining online to support Busan's hosting the World Expo in 2030. Thank you.
Thank you, Ambassador. I hope that the, that South Korea gets the opportunity to host Busan Expo. Thank you very much. Let me now take few questions from the audience. Please mention your name and your organization and please take one minute to ask your question. I would take three questions first. Sorry, the microphone, please. Thank you.
Okay. I'm very interested about environment, peace of the world in the earth. But I am a little worried, because I don't find it, it becomes good. I find it became too terrible. In whole world, example, you know, the pandemic, you see. And for me, is there are a lot of artificial criminal about environment in nature. So, we, perhaps, there are a lot of money used for the peace and good nature for in the earth. But why? We need more. And when we can use our science for better, better world, for beautiful earth. I'm very sorry, because I don't, I, example, there are too lot of fire on the world in Korea. Last year, during this year, all the country was burned by nature, the fire in the mountain. And I also realized that in many countries, the mountain was burned. I don't know why. And the example, why in the world, the ocean was always oil problem? There are a lot of oil disaster in the ocean. So, if we continue this problem with criminal, I don't know who want to destroy it in the earth. I think we have a lot money for spend on unity, not good for see for nature, the earth. So, I hope your organization find more developed solution for nature keep the earth. This is mission for God.
Thank you.
The earth is only one, it's not two. We cannot go the space for live there. It's impossible, impossible. So, we must find more effective solutions. You know, it's very dangerous.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Are there any other questions? Any questions? Yes, madam.
Thank you to all the speakers. I'm joining from the Ministry of Foreign Affairs, actually. I read through the report before coming here and I saw that you dedicated quite a length of the report on the impact of these twin crises in the so-called vulnerable countries. And I wonder if in the longer report, or perhaps in the future, if you will dedicate, if you will be looking more into the impact of twin crisis on the so-called industrial countries. I ask this because of two reasons. One, because we need a wake-up call to the industrial countries, industrialized advanced countries, to act on this, because this is a problem that cannot be solved by the vulnerable countries alone, as you both mentioned in the panel. And second, because we can infer or infer from these cases that in some ways, being industrialized protects you from the twin crisis. And I don't think that is exactly the message you want to send out.
Thank you so much. I guess that's a question to you, Dan, and we'll come to you. Any one more question I would like to take from the floor? If not, let me come to you, Dan, for you to answer that question, as well as perhaps say a few words as concluding remarks. And then Ambassador Kim, I'll come to you for a few words as concluding remarks. Thank you.
Yes, thank you very much for both of those questions. On the second one, I think that's a really good point. I mean, what is clear is that the meeting point of these twin crises at the moment, the meeting point of them, is in the most vulnerable countries. But it's certainly clear, and I think we do make the point, that in the, that the industrialized world or the developed world is experiencing both of these crises. But it's perhaps not experiencing so far as we could find the evidence, the interlinkage, except in this one important respect, absolutely fundamental respect, which is that deteriorating international relations make it harder to find the basis for cooperation to handle and manage the environmental problems. But I think you're right, that there is a line of research that we need to be following there. We've actually uncovered several other potential lines of research. There's a lot of kind of hints that we have picked up. I will tell you one, for example, which is air pollution. Air pollution affects every organ in the body. The brain is only an organ, seen in one way. Therefore, activity, your actions, for example, your willingness to inflict violence and to take the risk of being in gang violence and so on, will partly reflect your psychological state, which is partly a question of chemical imbalances in the brain, which perhaps can be triggered to some degree by air pollution. I'd like to explore that connection more. There are lots of connections already identified between air pollution and psychology. So, that would be another one to go into. But I think you're raising a really crucial point there. Now, on the broader thing and where to finish, I want to say a couple of things. One is that there is no such thing as a purely environmental problem, right? Everything that we talk about as an environmental problem is actually an issue arising out of our relationship as humanity in different ways and forms to nature and how we have been exploiting it and how through that we have been both relying on it and thriving, but also damaging it. And out of that, out of that understanding, we have to see that what we need, I think, I'm agree with much of what you were saying. We need a different relationship to nature. We need to be doing things differently. And one of the ways in which we can start thinking about that is by ceasing to fund activities which we know to be environmentally damaging and therefore damaging to us. So, Ambassador Kim, you raised the point of the unmet pledge for 100 billion dollars of aid. Well, perhaps, you know, after all, we currently spend 500 billion dollars a year in directly subsidizing fossil fuel industries, which are doing over the long term, an enormous amount of damage. We have to understand that that is not the relationship with nature which we really want. I don't think, I mean, there are clearly vested interests which keep us going that way. I think in a kind of, in a bigger moral, natural philosophy sense, this is criminal activity. But in the sense of people breaking laws, no, I don't think this is criminal activity. I think it is the force of inertia. I think it is lack of imagination, it is lack of a sense of innovation. Countries in Europe faced with the problem that they've been relying on imports from Russia are doing what? You know, they're going back to coal, for heaven's sake. I mean, it's just the wrong path to be taking. We need a more imaginative, a better informed, a better educated, as well as a more cooperative approach to all of these problems. And the solutions are there to hand. We know what they are. That's not what the question is. The question is how to develop the action which picks up those solutions.
Thank you so much, Dan. Ambassador Kim, any final words?
First of all, I would like to say that I completely share the frustration expressed by one lady from the floor, yes. However, at the same time, I want to say that we are moving forward, yes. We are moving forward in the right direction. The issue is how to accelerate our actions, particularly in this very critical decade. Therefore, the partnership, cooperation, as Dan mentioned, cooperation at every level, at all levels, are very, very important. In that sense, actually, the Korean new government, we put like global pivotal country as a slogan of this new administration and we are ready to work with our partner countries to make the world better and greener as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Ambassador. So, what I took away from, or I am taking away from this session is actually a few messages. Accept the problem of the twin crisis, address the root causes, enable green transition that is just and peaceful, and base the solutions on urgency, fairness, and foresightedness. And the solutions can be implemented by everyone. So, thank you so much for joining today. I wish you a pleasant evening. And thank you also for hosting us here. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, let's give a big round of applause to all of our panelists on the stage. Thank you. Thank you very much. And ladies and gentlemen, this brings us to the end of the CIPRI special session. And we will start off with the session two, Health Security at 6:30 PM Korean Standard Time, and followed by session three, Emerging Technologies and Security from 8:10 PM Korean Standard Time. So, ladies and gentlemen, once again, thank you for joining us, both online and offline. Please enjoy your break and please come back at 6:30 PM Korean Standard Time. Thank you very much. Thank you very much.